Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting on January 11th, 2024. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we're meeting on the traditional lands of Acadia First Nation, part of Mi'kmaq, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item number three, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda as circulated? Counselor Hurlberg, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I add update on public engagement?
Update on public engagement. I do have a question in that regard. Is this in regards-
That was about what we had at, we had made a motion a while ago to figure out how we could better engage the community when it comes to surveys and projects and things like that.
So you're not referring to the direction that I got from council-
No.
-in regards to having public input-
No.
...because I'm not ready for that. That's-
No, that was separate.
That's coming up on the 24th.
Yep, that was separate.
So, I guess we'll put that under new business, item 9.4. Can you repeat the, is it old business?
Yeah, it would have been, it would have been a motion that-
All right, since there is a motion.
And I only thought of it this morning and I did send a quick-
Public engagement.
Email off, sorry about that.
Public engagement.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the other one was grants list from NSFM.
Grants list from NSFM. Is that an old business item?
No, I wouldn't say.
No, so we'll put that under new business, 9.4, grants list.
And that's everything, thank you.
All right, I need a motion to amend those two items. Moved by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any more additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So.
Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Nick Hilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item five, if there's any declaration of conflict interest, please notify me and I'll make sure that your name is recorded in the meeting minutes. Item number six, presentations, item 6.1. We have with us today the Southwest Nova ATV Association. I do believe your name is Ken?
Yes, sir.
All right, if you wouldn't mind, there's a red button on your thing, just hit that. And I'm going to turn your microphone on and you may start anytime you're ready.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to thank you for taking me and letting me give you the brief. As most of you are aware, that in the provincial government has prevented, presented the Roads to Trail Act that allows for access to, of OHVs on highways if so granted by them, or like Yarmouth Municipality, they did it for Water Street, to connect trails or to take OHVs to services required. How do I change the slide? Just this here? Theoretic, oh, there we go.
There you go.
Okay, we're just asking for your support. We know that as a district, you're not allowed to OK us to use the side of the road as a trail, Roads Trail. We are fully aware that you can't do that, that part of the policy we have, and what we're looking for is from the trailhead at the Acadia Corner with Shabogue to the basically Tri-County Tractor, which is the Kawasaki dealer. In between there, there is both food, fuel, accommodations if needed, and repair facilities for OHVs if they require it. They can get there by using the side of the road. Again, these are the things that we'd be able to access. The Roads Trail Act follows basically the same rules as the pilot project that many of you may know of, happened in Waymouth for four years. There's a lot of limitations and some requirements. They're required to do this. They will follow the same guidelines as I provided each of you, the councillors, with a sample copy of them, so that if you ever get questions, you have those. The CAO has a copy for you, that you can answer questions. We, as an organization, have to provide a package to the provincial organization, Advance, which is the ATV Association of Nova Scotia, twice a year, which they are allowed to present twice a year to the provincial government to make decisions whether yea or nay for requests. The guidelines we have to follow, or we have to do, get, submit community support, and the way we do that is either going door-to-door along the stretch we're looking for, house-to-house, business-to-business, talking to the people, giving them letters and petitions, as well as we're giving them the guideline I gave you, and they have the choice to sign yes or no of the petition, or not support us. Basically, the other idea was host a information session, and being that we're nonprofit, we don't have a lot of money to hold an information session every time we, one of these is coming up. So I went door-to-door to every business and house along the route. They received a letter, like you did, with the petition and a map of the area, as well as the guidelines there. The package requires us to submit, to Advance, the route we wish to use, with providing GPS coordinates, the length of distance on the road, the names of the roads, the speed limit on the road, and any letters either for or against our request from the businesses or, and/or accommodations along there. We have, uh, there, there. So basically, when, once we have all this together, we submit the package, and the package is taken by Advance, they review it before they send it to the provincial government for the decision-making. We are fully aware that only municipalities that own the roads may make the decision on their own, such as Yarmouth, so there's a lot of times we'll be sitting in front of municipal districts, as yourself. I probably will be doing an Argyle one sometime in the future, because there's three places in the Argyle area for fuel that we'd like to get access off the trail. So you're not the only place I'll be seeing. I'm just waiting to hear back from them when they have their meeting this month. Some of the rules you have to understand, we, people have to understand is when they use it, the vehicles that are permitted are all-terrain vehicles. Those do not include the two-wheel type of dirt bikes or snowmobiles. And depending on the law, the ATV has to become from the factory as a second two-up vehicle for someone to ride two people on it. They cannot add the seat to the one they bought and call it a two-up. It has to be manufactured two-up, or side-by-side with the two seats with seatbelts. And again, all OHV rules have to be followed still. That means they have to wear a helmet, as it goes on here, in order to access it, they have to have a license. The OHV has to be registered with the provincial government, so it has to have a plate, it has to have insurance. Some of the rules as you go along, that may be different from the pilot project, is that when you are riding with the passenger, the passenger has to be, I believe it's said here, nine years age or older, can't be under, so that they can't take their three-year-old on a ride to town in and on an ATV. It's illegal. With that, the Trails Act is the same thing. Basically, according to the OHV rules, you cannot operate a OHV crossing any type of road if you do not have a license. So if you do not have a provincial license, you're not allowed to cross even a street road. You have to have a license so you're, you know the safety of the road. So anyone that sees a young teenager crossing Highway 340 or one of the other ones to get across a trail, they're doing it illegally. So to, just so you're aware, that to legally cross any road, they have to have a license. And then goes through with how they enter and exit the roads. No ATV is legally allowed to use built-in signal lights. They have to know their hand signals. So even if it was put in at the factory, they're not allowed for use. They're supposed to be, you know, their left, right, and stop signals with their hands. So it goes back to when we were all kids learning how to ride a bike. And for those that didn't learn how to ride a bike, they could be at a disadvantage, because there's a lot nowadays. When they travel, it's got to be in single file with no passing. The key here is the maximum speed they're supposed to travel along with this Roads Trail Act is 25 kilometers an hour. They can't be, they're not supposed to be doing anything more than that, because they're just traveling on the side of the road. Another thing is, with this stretch we're looking for, it is perfect, the fact that your shoulders are wide enough that no ATV has to travel on the pavement with the cars. They can travel on the side of the road and not have to get on the pavement at all. So they will not be, they should not be on the pavement and should not interfere with traffic doing the 70 along there, or the 50 from the start. It's a maximum is 25 from there. And because I didn't keep up with my slides for the people in the back, basically, are there any questions?
Is there any questions of council members? Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, I believe you're first.
Thank you for the presentation, and it's good to hear, hear from you and your association. Just wondering, as you're well aware, we're, we're talking about, you know, at some point in the future, it's on our, it's on, it's on our radar for sure, putting in a, an active transportation bike lane sidewalk on, on the stretch and, and the province widening the road, turning lanes and all that type of thing. It, it might be an opportunity in just, I know, I know our CAOs here and wardens here to maybe investigate, you know, when that's built, how we could accommodate off-road vehicles, ATVs, as you're, as you're saying, to, to get to those things. So last year I was overseas, and, and in the city of Amsterdam, they have lots of bike lanes, but they also allow electric vehicles in those. Obviously, there's no four-wheeler, no, no off-road vehicles there, because that's not, it's a big city. But they do have like a, an electric car that's like basically the size of, side of a size, size of a side-by-side, and, and they go on the bike lanes. So that, so that they've worked it out somehow, some, some way there. So when we design that, it may be worthwhile seeing what can be done and, and working along with the province in terms of accommodating your need and all the active transportation needs, all at the same time. So just, just want to put that out there for, for future consideration. So thank you for the presentation.
With that, I've just, when I talked with your CAO last week, found sidewalks. I didn't know that. I live in Melbourne, so I don't live on that stretch. And with the house-to-house, we only do the stretch that we're looking at, so if, I didn't do anyone else to hear that. The CAO mentioned that to me last week, and the turn signals, I don't know, but the turn lanes, I don't know either. One thing I did fail to mention about the OHV rules is, ATVs, OHVs, they give right to everybody. What should happen when they come across pedestrians, bicyclists, is they slow down to 10 or lower. And in some cases, when you're out on the trails and there's horses, most people will stop and turn their vehicles off till the horse has passed, so as not to spook the horse. But we see the right of way to everybody. We stop, slow down when you're passing, you're supposed to, when you're passing people. You're not supposed to keep them in, you slow down, especially in the summer, it's dusty. They most appreciate it. But yeah, that's one of the things we'd have to figure that, that we see, we give the right of way to everybody, no matter what it is.
Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Couple of questions. You're, you're talking about all these regulations that they, they're going to go 25 miles an hour, they have to stop to all other people using this trail when that, how do you enforce that?
With this new policy right now, until, if this comes in, it's enforced by DNR. With this, the, our belief is the RCMP would be allowed to pull people over, just like they would if you were speeding in your own car. It'd be the same idea. They could ticket you the same way, for no insurance, no registration. It would be the RCMP and/or DNR.
So will they be traveling this route?
The RCMP travels Stars Road all the time.
I meant the, the trails.
This is Star, that's what we're talking about, Stars Road.
Oh, okay.
The airport stretch from Shabogue, the Acadia Corner to Tri-County Tractor. That stretch of road there, that's what they would be-
I got you. My second question is, you mentioned about uses of the trails, but you, maybe I misunderstood here, but you don't allow snowmobiles on your trails?
No, no, this, the road access, they're not, it's not for them.
Just the road access.
The trails were shared, they're multipurpose, they're used them.
Yep, okay.
There's a general gentleman's agreement between Sand, which is the snowmobile associate, and Advance, that when it's snowmobile season and the trails groom, that ATVs will stay off.
Yeah, okay, that's what I, I just wanted clarification here. Okay, thank you.
Deputy Ward? Yeah, I just wanted to comment about your, your comment about, you know, the, the ATVs, you know, seating to other vehicles and pedestrians and that type of thing. Just my experience, I, I run a little bit and have been on the tracks, not, it's not the highway, but it is the tracks, and I've always found the ATVs to be really, really good. So when you're running or whatever, you know, you wave and they, they slow down, and, you know, it's, it's so, so I think, I think 99.9% of ATV users are, are really being collaborative and, and doing the right thing, so that, that bodes well for the future. So, thank you.
Counselor Nick Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ken, for coming in. I guess my question, I, I actually agree with Counselor Cunningham. Man, my, my head's still in the vehicle here. Counselor Cunningham, and the fact that by doing this now, you know, we're starting, we can take it into account when we do the upgrades to the airport stretch, so I think it's really important that we support this in one way or another. And, and the idea is you'll be back with more? That would be the idea?
The, as I mentioned to the CAO, when we hand our package in, we have to wait for the province to come back to us, if that is yea or nay. And as I mentioned, it doesn't, it's not mandatory that we have to talk to you or get your, we just do it because it's politeness, to let you know what's happening in your backyard. Like I said, with Argyle, it's the same idea. Only one of the places we go by, and we're trying to get in Argyle, goes by the municipality building. But for all other areas we're looking at, so they know what we're doing, so you're aware, we're not leaving you in the dark, because I served and I hated it when I got something come from behind and didn't know what it was, and you're thinking, trying to pedal your feet real quick to get an answer, because you don't know what it is. I feel by being in front of you, so you know what's ahead of you, you know what's coming, if it's coming, yes or no, you know what's already has been spoke of, so you can be prepared for it, whatever it is.
Thanks, Ken, appreciate it.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, thanks, Ken, for coming in. Yeah, that, that's what I was wondering, you were mentioning about the, the package you're putting in, so this is already included in the package that you're, you're submitting, and-
Yes.
And this is really just given, so I appreciate the heads up. I guess it's like an ink to Counselor Cunningham's point, 99.9%, I mean, I've been passed on Main Street by a four-wheeler. Right? So, you know, you're going to have a-
Yes.
-bad apple in every batch, I mean, you can't help it. I have traveled the trails, been a while. There's no trails, and I'm not trying to put this aside, but there's no trails that, that run from the tracks over that way now? I haven't been there in a while.
No. But there's no trail that leaves the rail bed until you get to Water Street and it connects it? The idea here is people coming from Digby that want to go through, they can go to Pupnic on the way back, they can stop, get gas, if they want to launch from Berry, it's the same idea, but there's nothing that connects them two together, other than Water Street.
No, I meant, I meant to get to, to get to the gas and stuff, like from the tracks. There used to be a trail that could get you to, like behind V and R, would run-
I have no idea where that would be.
Okay.
I haven't seen that, to my knowledge, I don't have it. I said, I received, as I mentioned to the councillor, I've received back eight or nine petitions, and only one mentions anything, and it was actually from the First Nations that said their caveat is that they don't want the reservation to be used as a shortcut.
Yeah.
And from some of the houses I stopped at, their complaint was that people are doing that now, going through the back way-
Right.
-through the reservation to get there, and they're tearing up backfields of their-
Through the properties and stuff.
I don't know where that exit is, I have, I have to go, the only way I find is actually leave the trail and go through people's private property. And if we were to do that, we'd use what is called a landowner's agreement-
Yep.
-through Advance, where the landowner would give us permission to put a trail through there, keep it maintained, and there'd be insurance on it through Advance for the trail if he did that.
Oh, no, I, like, I was glad to see, I was glad to see the town of Yarmouth open Water Street up. Obviously, this is a busy, you know yourself, you live in Melbourne, so this is, this is a busy road, and it's going to be, you know, this time of year, like the snowstorm we had the other day. Will the wielders be on the road, or will they still stay on the side, you know?
They, they should be, well, if the roads, the shoulders paid, cleared, they would be on the shoulder, I would hope. But I can't guarantee it, because I can't tell you how, I've seen people, someone drove a side-by-side all the way into Tim Hortons-
Yeah, yeah.
-from there, like-
Yeah, oh, no, no, I think it's a-
I can't explain that. They weren't, the bike when I see it had no plate on it, so obviously, they're not registered or insured.
Right. Again, you get to, yeah. So, no, I, I see where we're going with this, and, yeah, I, it's a great idea, it's something that we, you know, it's going to get people around, I think. You see it in Newfoundland, and there's no reason that we shouldn't be doing it here in Nova Scotia.
Okay, we, we will only be applying for places where it has services that they need, either fuel, accommodations, or food.
Yeah.
That's the only place we'll look at. Won't be doing it just so someone, so Joe can go from his house to the trail down the Main Street that the-
Okay, no, that's good to hear.
-town will be doing that. It's just to get access to services.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I have one quick question. You mentioned about side-by-sides, about two-seaters and stuff, but what about the older, traditional ATVs, like what they had back when, in the early 2000s and stuff like that?
You mean like Big Red?
Yeah, like Big Red, yeah, that's a three-wheeler, but, but they considered that a-
An ATV, yes.
An ATV as well. So has the definitions changed over the years?
Um, ours, I believe, is still, what it is, is very few are made up at the, the factory as two-ups, is what they call the one with the, with the seat in the back.
Yeah.
A lot of people, they buy a standard 700 bike, and they'll-
And then they add the seat on the-
They add the seat on the back. That's not considered a two-up. Legally, they can be fined if it has-
The only one, if I remember correctly, that was considered a factory two-up would have been a Polaris.
Yes, the Sportsman is one of them.
Yeah, the Sportsman was one of them.
Seat built into it, they have those.
And some of them were six, six-by-six, I think they were too.
Yeah, they had those older ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are still considered.
Okay, I just wanted, just wanted to clarify that. Anyway, council doesn't make any decisions or anything during presentations, Ken, but thank you very much for giving us the heads up, and-
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. Moving on, item 6.2, site manager from Cape Forchue, Jennifer Wilkins.
She's just in the other room.
Welcome, Jennifer. Could you please hit the red button on the thing there, and I'll turn your mic on, and as soon as you're ready, you can start.
Okay, great. Well, Happy New Year, everybody. Today, I just wanted to go over a, a little recap from the 2023 season out at the Cape Forchue Lighthouse. Let me see how to make this change. There we go.
There you go.
Okay, well, we, we opened the season officially on May 20th, just in time for the wildfires and the flooding in Halifax, and everything that seemed to delay the, the tourists, a lot of tourists were, were changing their plans because of that. We had, I, I have, this was my, my fifth season, actually, working out at the lighthouse, and I have to say, this season was one of the most interesting and the most challenging, mainly because of the weather-related issues. July was an extremely foggy month. It was foggy the, every single day out at the Cape, which of course affects our tours and, and affects the visitors. We did have a great August and September. The construction of the new fog alarm decks was occurring the whole season. I have to say, it was less disruptive than I thought it would be, and now that the decks are open, they're fantastic, and I can't wait for visitors to, to start experiencing them. We had a number of interesting events and groups throughout the season. I feel like more and more local organizations are bringing people out for, for their events and making us a, a part of, of what they're doing. The Chamber of Commerce always brings their doctors and medical students out, and we did have four cruise ships come. One of our most interesting groups, I thought, was the U.S. Lighthouse Society that chose to, to visit us, and they had decided to make a tour patch for their jackets, and they used our lighthouse because of the uniqueness of it, and they could have chosen any lighthouse in Atlantic Canada, but yet they chose ours to, for their tour patch, so I thought that was pretty cool. We started the season with a live broadcast from the top of the tower from CJLS, and we ended the season with a evening event, a meet and greet for the Nova Scotia Music Week. Throughout the season, we had monthly history presentations given by our, our local historian, Mike Cunningham, and we always have a, a nice Canada Day celebration as well. For traffic, we do have the pedestrian counters and the vehicle counters, so we know exactly what's happening. We did have a slight increase in vehicle traffic. Now, that includes a lot of construction traffic, no doubt. The pedestrian counters did show that we had 3,000 fewer visitors over the course of the season, 3,000 fewer out on the trails, and 5,000 fewer visitors going up the, the hill. And a lot of that was due, again, to the construction and the fog, and we also didn't have the cafe this season, we weren't able to secure a, a good operator, and so, again, that would be fewer people that would actually be going up the hill to the cafe. The climb-the-light tours continued. We were not disrupted because of the, the construction. We offered two tour options. You could book online for the full tour, which includes the historical narrative, or what was new for us this year is that we offered quick climbs every half an hour. And that was, was really beneficial to both the visitors and to the staff. The visitors then don't have to wait to climb, and we have more availability for them, and it's easier on us, because we don't have the cancellations or reschedules or, or other, you know, issues, the no-shows and that type of thing. We ended up this year with 2,662 people climbing the lighthouse, and so that was tour sales of 26,000. So to date, we've had 7,007 people climb the tower. The, the gift shops, we continued to lease the gift shop in, out, down in the Wensel House, and then up in the Keepers Residence, we had our shop up there. We expanded into two rooms, since we didn't have the cafe, and increased the inventory of the branded merchandise, and we also added some, a few snacks and beverages and coffee, and just to, you know, make up for not having the cafe. Store sales were 29,000, which was an increase of $13,000 compared to last year, so the, the store is, is very successful. The merchandise was running out, like mid-August, we were starting to run out of, of the certain sizes and styles, the more popular things. So this next season, I'm going to look into really buying even more, because it's, it's very successful. Donations, we're on par with last year at about $2,500 in donations. We did receive three new memorial benches to replace ones that had rotten, and we got a new big chair from Ian J. Millworks, which was, was a fantastic donation we hadn't expected. They were just going to fix up the chair, but then they decided to replace the whole thing, which was awesome. The consignment sales, we continued and kind of expanded with supporting the local artists. We have them hanging, hanging their artwork throughout the Keepers Residence building. The visitors love it, they get to sell some things, and we, we profited $1,100 with the consignment sales. So the total sales for the season for tours and merchandise was $55,200, which was an increase compared to last year of about $9,000 increase compared to last year. Our little museum upstairs in the Keepers Residence has, has expanded. We went into another room. The Yarmouth County Museum has loaned more items to us and helped us in setting up this new room, and we did receive some items from some local residents, some donations, and we received items from the Friends of the Yarmouth Light. And one of the most exciting things that we, we received from the Friends was the DCB 36 lens, which is the lens that was in the, the current Alpecore Tower. And so the plans for the lens is that this spring, we plan to move it to the Yarmouth County Museum for display until such time that we have a space at, on-site to, to display Ongoing challenges, you know, the, the goal for the food service, we would love to secure a long-term contract with a food service vendor and reestablish the cafe. The parking, the work is underway on redesign of the parking lot, and so that will be continued. And staffing, you know, continues to always be a challenge. We have applied for the Canada Summer Jobs Grants this year as well. And staffing, you know, continues to always be a challenge. We have applied for the Canada Summer Jobs grants this year as well. So that's it. Any questions?
Questions from council? Counselor Allen.
First time for me going first.
Thanks, Jen. I was out a couple of times this summer, just kind of bobbing around and it seemed busy. Traffic is definitely an issue by anybody that goes out there, but it starts right from the roads. Getting there is just a disaster. Like it's, you know, you come over a hill and if somebody's walking, it's, anyway, that's not us. I realize that. But how do you, I'm just looking at this and the look-off is in place and it's ready to go. It's fully accessible, correct? So people that wheelchairs or footy shoes can get up there. How do you, do you foresee that changing the lighthouse tours itself? Like I know, I know one of your employees was quite enthusiastic with the amount of tours they did. Could tell you right down to how many steps they put in for the whole summer.
That would be Sam.
Yeah, it would be Sam, yeah. And he loved every minute of it. And I know I've been up. It's a beautiful view, not so great when it's foggy, but welcome to Yarmouth. But how do you, do you foresee that changing much? Do you think maybe you'll get more people out there? Are you hoping that, you know, if they see the look-off, maybe they're going to want to go up?
Yeah, you know, I'm really not sure. Time will tell because I have thought of that, like will fewer people want to actually make the climb? Because now they can get a third of the way up, you know, on the top of the fog building. But, you know, I really don't think that it will affect it that much because it's still an experience and just to get inside of the tower. And, you know, this year, I plan to, if the weather permits, to have somebody more out there encouraging people that are on the deck to, you know, come on and make the climb and, you know, have somebody out there interacting out on the decks. That's my plan.
Oh, awesome. Yeah. No, I know it's a, it's definitely a destination. I mean, it's the place to be when you come to Yarmouth. Everybody wants to go and see it, so I just keep up the good work. That's all I can say. Like, yeah, great spot.
Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks so much, Jennifer. It's always exciting to hear what's going on at our fabulous lighthouse. In terms of staffing, how many staff do we hire in the summer?
Four. Yeah, we hire four.
Oh, okay. And the hours, we're open until?
Well, I'm hoping this year to maybe go into some evening hours. This past season, we were open until five. We were doing nine to five. We had tried some evening hours in the past and, you know, there tends to be quite a lull, you know, until people get finished their supper, I guess, and then come out and then they typically are just walking the trails. So we didn't find the evening to be hugely successful in the past, but I think it's worth a shot and I think I'm going to look at scheduling that for this year.
Hopefully, maybe if we can get a food service back out there again, that would make a big difference.
True, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Jennifer, for your work down there and the best of luck in the future. Again, I visit down there quite often and some of my times is off-season. And it's amazing how many people are there on the trail or look-off. And some, I forget what part of Europe they were there, they were from, but they were there taking a stroll around and looking around and whatnot. So that was interesting. I've seen people, because I always tell them who I am and, you know, ask where they're from. And some from Missouri and Alberta and, you know, so they're still coming, even in the off-season, there, people are there, so, which is very encouraging, I believe. So, thank you very much.
Deputy Ward.
Yes, thank you. And so I think that's a really good idea to have somebody out there, you know, encouraging, you know, the journey to the top of the light. Having said that, is there an online presence? Like, can you book a time online, that type of thing? Is that, have we done that yet?
Yes, yes. We had started the online booking, you know, which was absolutely necessary during COVID, you know. But we're continuing with the online booking. And so we do offer a few times per day that people can book online. And, you know, like I said, that we did start this year with offering climbs every half an hour just to take, because I felt like when we were only offering online booking, so many people would just show up and want to climb. And then the tours were already booked from people that had booked in advance. And so I felt like we were turning away people all the time, so that's why I made that change.
And is there any thought, like, to a sunset booking?
Sunsets are difficult. Yes, definitely thoughts on that. A few things. Sunsets are extremely unpredictable. You never know when you're actually going to have a good one. And when I've tried to do sunset tours in the past, invariably, it ends up being a night that there's not a sunset. And when you get later in the season, in August and September, the sunset's really not occurring until 9:00, 9:30 at night.
Right.
So then you have staff that's there until 10:30 at night. You know, so there's some difficulties with the sunset tours, although I love the idea.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Counselor Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, yeah, we tried a sunset tour at the end of the season. And it was sunny when we were in Milton and it was foggy when we got to the lighthouse, so it really is unpredictable, but still a beautiful view. And I was lucky enough to attend the Music Week gathering, which was also enjoyed by many from across Canada. So that was fantastic, or across Nova Scotia. That was fantastic. Actually, across Canada.
It was, yeah.
I guess my question to you and something I like to ask all our kind of directors that, is what can we do as council? What are three things we should be focusing on to make the experience better? What can we do to help you?
Wow, that's a loaded question.
What is the experience missing? And if you don't, if you don't know, maybe get back to me another time.
Well, I think it's some of the things that we've already mentioned regarding the infrastructure, you know, such as the parking. You know, the parking is always a big issue and, like what was mentioned, the trip on the way out there is just an issue in and of itself, although people do love the quaint, you know, driving along that crazy road, you know. Otherwise, I honestly can't come up with anything right on the spot as far as what else I would need, yeah.
If you do, please let us know. And I've been lucky enough to travel a fair bit and it is a world-class experience. I've paid more to do less in other areas and the view really is unmatched. We just get used to it because we're lucky enough to live here.
True, yeah, that is true.
Well, Jennifer, one thing I will say is you cannot predict the weather out there. And out there, the weather is always variable because one minute it can be foggy out there and clear in town. Or it can be, the fog be clearing out there and the fog move into town and inland. So you just never know. This year was a little bit different that I found because I like to do, go on a boat and go around the Yarmouth Harbor and out. But this year, I found if it wasn't foggy, it was windy. There was always something that seemed to happen. This year was just a strange summer out there. And I'm glad to hear that the numbers are holding and sales are increasing. We do, as you know, have a strategic plan for out there, different in different phases. And I think the next one is parking, if I'm not mistaken.
Council has said that.
Yeah, yeah. The next step would be initializing that. I think that would be the third of many more to come out there, different improvements. But that's been, when I started council, there wasn't even, the Leaf Erickson Trail wasn't even there. It used to be a whole bunch of rocks that were falling in where the trail goes right off the small parking lot we have now and goes up there. That wasn't even there when I first started council. And that was actually the first thing that we applied to a government grant to help us out, a federal government grant. So that area was always beautiful, but it's becoming more and more accessible. So not just able-bodied people can enjoy it, but also people that have mobility issues, so.
Yeah, it's definitely come a long way. And one thing I just thought of in response to the question also was that, one of the things I think we need to look at next is also how to get the people with mobility issues up the hill.
Yes.
Because now we do have, we do have the golf carts, but that's problematic too for people that can't transfer from a wheelchair into the golf cart. So that's-
Council's been on that. There was some land that come up for sale. They're really near there. And we're hoping to improve the washroom facilities there as well. So we're always looking out for opportunities like to improve that whole property. So, anyway, on behalf of council staff, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in. One thing I forgot to remind everyone at the start of this meeting, if your phone ringer and dinger is on, please turn it off. Usually I do say that at the beginning, but this time I forgot. And I happened to, mine happened to buzz and it just reminded me, so. All right, moving on, item number seven, Correspondence for Action, item 7.1.1, Yarmouth County Trail Development Association Trail Width. You all have a letter there from the Yarmouth County Trail Development Association, and there's a request in there. What is the pleasure of council? Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just maybe a comment to get the conversation started because we had them provide us with a presentation last year about the Trail Association, their condition, how they're doing. And I feel this is just an elevation of that. So I'm kind of curious, maybe even what the CAO sees as direction for this because I know that they're down to minimal membership. They're struggling. And I wanted to ask our previous presenter maybe a question about this, but didn't know if that was the right place or not. I feel like, I feel like we're all looking for a little bit of direction on this and I'm not really sure where to start.
Yeah, it was the AL.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you to Counselor Hilton, you know, when I read the letter from the Trail Association, I think that they recognize that the user groups of the trails and the gear that's being used on the trail is changing. And so I think what they ask is, is for support from the municipality and council to help them advocate and lobby to the province to take a look at standards and standardize trail opening widths and some of these other elements that the association looks after for us in terms of guardrails and whatnot. Just so that when they do the work, the standards consider who the user groups are and the work is done and there's no unintended consequences that, you know, could create barriers for user groups. I don't think that they're taking a stand on who should or shouldn't be using it. They're just saying there appears to be wider vehicles and there could be barriers to those vehicles. And so standards that are applied across the province would be helpful. That's how I read the letter. And they're just looking for some support to advocate and lobby for that.
Counselor Hilton, still at the floor.
Yeah, just to continue that. Yeah, I agree. My understanding of the agreement they have with the NR is, you know, the Trail Association has really been assigned to manage the trails for Yarmouth County, Yarmouth and I think Argyle County as well, or Argyle as well. I can't ask him. Yeah, so the understanding is within that management or that contract, it had a set width. I think we need to go back to the table and have a discussion with maybe the ATV Association and the Trail Association of really what the goal is. Because I think vehicles are wider. There's a number of wider vehicles. People are being sold vehicles with the idea that they can drive them on the trails. And the Trail Association is trying to work within a contract that they, you know, they're being told to enforce, but yet some people don't really understand why it's happening. So there needs to be, I think there was an education piece request. And I'm not sure if maybe we can all sit at one table and see how we could really help. That's my comments to this.
Deputy Ward.
So I mean, what I, Counselor Hilton brings up a number of good points. There are four requests in here and there's sort of detail that certainly is probably missing just because you can't put all that detail in a letter. So all I'd say, I think maybe if staff reaches out to Mr. Day and begins the process of compiling, like, things that we might do as a council to assist, I think maybe that's the best, maybe that's the best way forward because I think we're all probably wanting to assist this. It's important work and the trail's really, really valuable. But things are changing a lot. There are different user groups. And, you know, the ATVs are wider than they want, where many of them are now. So I don't know if that's, you know, that's certainly something we can probably help with is an organization, you know, communicating with the province and maybe working with them and all the partners to, you know, improve the situation. This, you know, obviously, it's a very, very important piece of infrastructure we have within our municipality. And, you know, I think we need to do the work to make sure that it's, well, I guess, it's best use or it's best able to be used by our residents. So I think through you, Mr. Chair, I'll ask the CAO if that's something that her and her staff could do, reach out to Mr. Day and maybe flush this out, bring it back in a little bit more detail with some actions that we may take.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you to the Deputy Warden. Yeah, I think understanding the specific actions that the association has in mind would be helpful. And understanding, you know, where the municipality can lean in in terms of leveraging our grant programs, helping facilitate meetings, like you say, leverage our communications channels, make space available for stakeholders to come together and talk. There's a variety of ways we can help.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. There was four separate asks in here to reevaluate the width opening based on the current multi-use traffic and safety allowances, develop a standardized provincial set of multiple-use trail rules stating the opening with, communicate with multi-use trail use rules to all interest groups and trail managers and enforce the trail opening with on all former rail corridors as decided by the province. And that's what there's in this asking. I think that's a good way to go about this.
Counselor Durkey.
Oh, thank you, Warden. Looking at the four requests, the first one to me is what stands out because I do walk those trails and thinking that once we get more clarification on this, that there are many grants available. And I know we're going to be talking about the NSFM Grant Finder. And I know that Argyle has received funding in the past, that that's what we could probably help with at that point is to look at getting grant money to make improvements to the trails that we have. I think that, you know, it's interesting when you speak to bicycle folks. They're saying we're missing the boat a lot on this, that we could really do a lot more to promote the trails if they're good for bicycles because there are huge numbers of people around the country that bike. And something we want to look at is do a better job marketing what we have available. Thanks.
All right, anymore?
Actually, I prefer motions personally, so if you're willing. Deputy Ward.
Yeah, I'll move that staff reach out to Mr. Day and his organization and further investigate what role the municipality of Yarmouth can play in improving the situation he outlines in his letter to council.
So this is a recommendation to a regular council, correct? Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second here? Seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlibur. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Any more discussion on that item? Hearing none. Item 7.1.2, A Letter of Support Request from the Town of Yarmouth. You all have that in your package?
Counselor Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just a question to staff if they have any comments about this before I'm willing to make the motion to provide the letter of recommendation.
My only comment would be is that we're grateful for the agreement we have with the Town of Yarmouth, providing the treatment services that this particular asset provides to the residents of the District of Yarmouth.
So I'll move that we make a- So, I'll, I'll move that we make a, a motion to write a letter of support, supporting the attached letter in its regard.
Okay, a motion on the floor, do I have a second there? Seconded by Councilor Patty Durkey, and this was also, I didn't hear at the beginning, this was a recommendation to committee that council, committee, or regular council, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it's, this, it also states in this letter that the town of Yarmouth is scheduled for an upgrade for the new effluent standards of 2040. So, it's only right that I think that we send them a letter of support, there's no financial commitment in that regard, so. Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Deputy Ward?
Mr. Chair, yeah, just, it, it's on the topic and perhaps we can, can look out, so, so the upgrades, would the upgrades include additional coverage for wastewater management potentially in the municipality of Yarmouth or is it just upgrading the existing, the existing infrastructure or the coverage of the existing, or the infrastructure that covers an existing group of homes or homes and businesses?
I guess that's a darn good question and I think that that would be a question that only the, the authority that, that's run by the town could answer. I don't know if it's going to increase capacity or it's just upgrading to what the effluent that comes out of the facility, I'm really not sure. Madam CAO?
So, it's upgrades. I took a quick peek at the EXP report, but it, I didn't look to really understand if capacity was necessarily going to be increased. The plant is not at capacity right now, so I really wasn't concerned with capacity. I was more or less concerned with making sure the license is still in place for the facility to run. That was what I was really looking for. So, I mean, absolutely, you know, one of the, one of the pieces in the letter is around the town's application, but the project will have to go forward regardless of whether or not their current application that they referenced in their letter is approved. And so, you know, there will be likely a dialogue between the town and the municipality around that. We'll take a peek at our agreement with them to understand what the funding formula for capital projects is on the asset and, you know, maybe, maybe just through the Public Works Directors get a better handle on the scope of work.
Deputy Ward, you still have the floor?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, just seeing this kind of piqued my interest a little bit, like, I mean, and there are all those questions that maybe we should put in our, our minds to answer, like, will these upgrades, I mean, obviously, it's to a higher standard to, to treat what effluent we have currently, but are there opportunities to allow for, you know, in, in, increased commercial activity in the area? I mean, are, are, I don't know, are we limited by, by, by the capacity of the, not the capacity, not the ultimate capacity, the volume capacity of the treatment facility, but is, is, is it able to treat everything that every other, you know, top, high-end latest treatment facility? You know, so are there certain things that couldn't come to the municipality based on the capacities to treat certain types of effluents? That's something else we should probably look into as we, as we embark on this road to, to, to improving the, the wastewater management infrastructure.
Any more comments? Hearing none, item 7.2, for information. Questions or comments there? Councilor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 7.2 for information, I just wanted to ask, I see we got a letter from the Fish Point Historic Site. I know if anybody's been around town yesterday and probably today, I'm just wondering, I'm gonna ask Councilor Cushion if he was out there, if, how did it stand up to the flooding?
Actually, I, I-
Turn, turn on your mic, Councilor Cushion. And yours as well, Councilor Allen. So, just remember that any discussions are through me to the other person.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, actually, I wasn't out there yesterday, I was, I had to attend a funeral, so I wasn't there for the, the high tide, but I certainly got the pictures and a few comments and whatnot. So, I haven't really, and I had to go to another funeral today, so I never had a chance to go down there for high water, see what it's actually like, but they put a lot of money in there and, and certainly with the, with the armor stone that's there and the way it's a construction, it probably, the water probably did come in, but it left too, right? So, you know, it was a major, major flood down there.
Yes, sir.
You know, major flood. But, we had that southeast wind with the, with the high course tides and it just wind and just, and just to let people know that, you know, Department of Highways are aware of, of the problem there and I do know that they, they put a, submitted a, a grant last year to have that certain area upgraded and to the federal government and it was declined, so hopefully they'll be submitting again this year. But, people often say, well, it's been going on for years. Yes, it has and that's been one of my, my, I've been advocating for that, that, that area to be upgraded since 2016, so, and this is the first time we've actually had an application go in, so. But, anyway, I, no, I haven't visited it yet, but they, it's, it's, it's a, I'm sure there was water on it just because of the amount of, amount of water, high tide it was and whatnot, so, yes.
Councilor Durkey?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. With reference to Communities in Bloom, I, we've had presentations from Communities in Bloom in the past and I know that there are a lot of resources that would help with beautification of our communities and we've done a great job with our banners. Unfortunately, the wind yesterday took a few, particularly in Port Maitland, but it does add pride to our communities. I know a lot of people also are very interested in gardening and taking care of their properties and I would like to suggest that we look into again, I think, I know we had this discussion before and we could delay it to the next committee, the whole, but I'd like to have a, a discussion about joining Communities in Bloom and the advantages that would have That's a motion.
So, so please, please repeat the motion?
So, so I would like to, because this was just for information, I would like to add joining Communities in Bloom to our next committee, the whole meeting for discussion.
Okay, so that would be February and I don't know the date right off the top of my head.
Yeah.
So, a motion on the floor, do I have a second there? Seconded by Councilor Sherri Hurlberg. Any discussion on that? Hearing none or seeing none? I'm really, personally, I'm not sure where we're going with that, we did discuss this before, but there is a motion on the floor to move it to the February committee, the whole meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. So, that will be on the agenda in February. Thank you. All right, no more on, for information, item eight, old business, item 8.1, you have in front of you a briefing note, Designated Trail Off-Highways Vehicle Act. Madam CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, counsel to you through the Warden, when the original correspondence came in from the Southwest Nova ATV Association, you asked me to just take a peek at the ask and just to provide a briefing note that would put on the table some of the considerations that council might want to think about in its deliberation on whether or not to write a letter of support to the province for their application for the road trail area as identified in the map, which is from what we call the Arcadia Corner up to roughly Tri-County Tractor. So, in the, in the briefing note, I just outlined for you kind of who, who I spoke with, the legislation that's involved in the consideration and, you know, essentially, and it was shared this afternoon, what some of the feedback has been from the work that the association has done, reaching out to the community. And so, I guess in short, definitely increases level of service, it increases active living opportunities, it increases economic opportunities in that corridor. It's not completely without risk because the whole program relies on people operating in a way that's prescribed by the legislation. And so, you know, what, what I heard from Public Works as well as the RCMP is, you know, a few concerns about on the, on the staffing level, not having everything that's needed to enforce the program. So, for Public Works, it's about a standardized process for receiving these applications and making sure they're all treated in the same manner. The area managers are working together to try and build in some consistency, but there's no approved policy by the province. And then, you know, because municipalities are responsible for public safety and policing, the RCMP have voiced, you know, just a concern with the fact that the 5% of the people who won't participate in the program the way that they should, enforcement can be difficult. You can imagine driving along Highway 3 in a police cruiser and there's a machine on the road that's not complying, you know, the RCMP can't chase them down to pull them over and, and deal with the issue because they're in a car now, the ATV is off on the trail or on private property or something like that. So, there are a few concerns around that. So, that's why at the end of the briefing note, you know, I just indicate that, you know, council may want to consider, you know, qualifying its support around, you know, support for the program operating the way it was designed to operate.
Councilor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, you know, I, I do echo those concerns and I, and I, I do, but I also understand the need to kind of support the program because I feel like that same vehicle is going to be the one going down Water Street. So, the RCMP, I want to support them in figuring out how they can best, you know, keep our residents safe, but I do support the idea of, you know, approved ATV access to utilities. I mean, I'm an ATV user, responsible one, in my opinion. So, I am in favor of this and I would support writing the letter in the case of Route 3 and you can identify the traffic issues if, if, if council sees fit, but I am supportive of the, the idea and would make the motion, but we'll hear from other counselors first.
Deputy Ward?
Well, I'll, I'll, I, I, I can make a motion, we can talk about, about the details and see if it's the right motion, but I'll move that the municipality of Yarmouth advance for approval to the next regularly scheduled regular council meeting, that we, we write a letter to the province referencing the Nova Scotia Off-Highways Vehicle Act and Roads Trail Act in, in reference to, to the request made by the, made today through correspondence to, to council and that, you know, we, we support in principle, that we support in principle, you know, the expansion of the network of, of accessible areas, including the airport stretch, given, given that it's, it's, it's workable under the, under the acts, under, under the legislation that currently exists.
Okay, a motion on the floor, do I have a second there? Seconded by Councilor Nick Hilton. Discussion on the motion on the floor. I'll, I'll start, I, I'm in favor of this. I think we got to start somewhere and in principle is, is what you added in this, is motion, which is the reason why I would support it because we, we do need to do a little bit more work or I think the province needs to do a little bit more work, but in principle, I'm in agreement of opening up different areas of the province, provided that the province actually outlies or lays out what, what the parameters are. So, that, that's my two cents on this. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 8.2, Municipal Housing Needs Report by Turner and Drake Partners Limited.
So, I can, I can kick off the conversation, council. So, this was provided in a previous meeting as an information item, but there was a desire by council maybe to chat a little bit about it. So, the information that's in your package is the work that was completed by Turner and Drake under contract with the province around some housing analysis for our municipality specifically. And I think it's important in reading the document to understand in the introduction that the document should be considered a form of base knowledge intended for local review and discussion. So, the idea is that this is, this is a, a collection of pieces of information and assumptions and forecasts that is very baseline to, basically, to begin the work necessary to understand, you know, what, what is housing going to look like, what can we predict housing is going to look like in the municipality moving forward. The survey response rate was quite low, only 94. People responded to the survey and it was a self-selection survey, it wasn't a random sample survey. There are a few pieces in the, in the report that talk about the projections for population and population demography over the next number of years in the municipality of Yarmouth. There, there's a discussion in there around affordability for renting and for owning and there's some information in there about the, the changes between 2016 and 2021 around some of the demography. Council have directed me to begin looking for some funding so that the municipality can have its own housing plan. And, you know, from a municipal perspective, we can do our best work to support housing through, through planning documents that allow a variety of housing types and styles, but also through taking a look at the capital investment plan and trying to understand where people are going to want to be and what types of services they're going to need, everything from water and wastewater and sidewalks to public transportation, to public parks, all of those things. And so, the Turner and Drake work is a great place to start with for developing a housing plan for the municipality of Yarmouth, but more work does need to be done.
Councilor Hurlberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam CAO. I read through this over the holiday and I, there's a lot of stats and a lot of information. Thank you for clarifying because I really, like, I'm not sure where we go other than, you know, having the staff do the work and do we continue to just have this as an agenda item on future, you know, future agendas? Outside of our strategic plan, you know, I guess I just don't know, like, I know that there's work that we need to be doing, but how do we, outside of the work that you're doing, is there anything else that we can be doing to encourage or to dive deeper into some of these stats to figure out how, is there, you know, side avenues of ways that we can go to, to improve some of these things? Because some of it's very, like, it's startling, you know, and it is a small portion of our population who have, you know, completed the survey, but, you know, it says, housing stock doesn't meet the needs of our population, senior students, seasonal workers and low-income folks. You think, okay, well, what can we do?
Right.
Right?
What I would suggest is, you know, the council appears to want to write a housing plan and so, the scope of work for that contract would include taking this Turner and Drake work and first of all, confirming, confirming the analysis and making sure that there aren't any corrections required to the forecast in particular and, and, and using that to take us to the next step. You know, the, the municipal lane around housing is to try and create an atmosphere where basically builders and/or property owners can as easily as possible build housing and, and build different types of housing for, not just for affordability, but for access to different types and different living styles, whether you're a student or maybe you're a single-income pensioner and you just, you know, you just need a one-bedroom with a den. So, it is not typically a municipal responsibility to actually build the housing stock. We had agreements with the province and the federal government, they are coming to an end. They are coming to an end. Under the renegotiations that we've just had, we had that taken off of our plate.
Right.
You know, providing subsidies to the net operating losses of public housing. So I need to put that on the record. So to your question, we're having trouble finding funding programs to help pay for writing the housing plan for the municipality. And a housing plan is required in order to go to the next step and apply for the Housing Accelerator Fund, which is where the federal dollars would come in to help us achieve the goals that we would need to achieve to make it easier for people to build. So I'll give you a hypothetical. So there is a person who owns attractive land that is ideally situated maybe to create six PIDs that are suitable for different types of housing, single-family dwelling, maybe a two-story apartment building with eight units, maybe a single-family dwelling with an in-law suite or an accessory building. But they need, in order to sell the lots or to have the lots built on, there's a road needed, there's a sidewalk needed, and there's wastewater needed. Well, those are pieces that the municipality can look at and say, well, where's our role? You know, maybe, maybe the municipality would make the investment in the wastewater and the sidewalk, and then that would allow the developer to move forward and to be able to have a business model where the developer would make money and the housing stock could become available. So it's true when, when the media reports from the federal and the provincial government that housing is a three-government responsibility. It is because all of the services required by people are delivered by all three levels of government.
Okay. So in saying that, we're talking about not finding a funding stream. So that could be something we could do and we start talking about budget. If we can't find a funding stream or we don't think there is, or we can support with additional money, that could be something that when we start our budget discussions that we could add in?
Yeah, so Mr. Warden, through you to the Counselor Hurlbert, I would recommend we don't Terry too long. We need this done in order to move forward. It's particularly important with our capital investment planning. There are a lot of demands and requests of council with respect to capital. And the sooner council understands where it needs to put critical infrastructure for housing, the sooner council will understand where it may take on other projects that are the nice-to-haves.
Okay, so I know that's, those are my two questions. Do I still have a couple of seconds?
You still have a couple of seconds.
So if we're thinking immediate, then I guess my next question would be, do we have money available now, you know? And this is, you know, this is where when we get into these discussions around the table and we really don't know where we're going, is there, is there funds available now that we could start this project now before we get into the next fiscal year? And do we need to make a motion to recommend to regular council that we look at some of that money?
Great question. So the timing is perfect. So I've already directed the staff to be drafting the RFP. So we haven't been waiting for a funding program to draft the RFP. So that's, that's being drafted now. Because of where we are on the calendar in our fiscal year, if we issue an RFP by the end of January and you give respondents 30 days or 45 days to respond, we're into our next fiscal year anyway.
Okay.
So I think we're in good shape.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Deputy Ward?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, the discussion's good around the housing issue. But again, if our municipal responsibility would largely lie, and I agree, in the area of providing infrastructure. And that's really, really important. That's what we should be here doing. We should be, we should be providing, you know, maybe additional water. I mean, obviously, the cost analysis is a piece. Town owns that infrastructure. But also working with developers to, you know, be able to put, put the opportunity in front of people to, to build housing in suitable locations. So looking forward to that, looking forward to having all those conversations about, you know, where our capital dollars are going. Because it's, it's important to grow the municipality.
Counselor Paddy Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam CAO, for the clarification on that. I just want to say, when you look at the statistics in this, we know that our population is an aging population. And one of the things we absolutely lack in the municipality is seniors' housing. And I know that the provincial government keeps talking about putting all this money towards seniors' housing. And it's so, how do we get from step one to step two? And you've explained that by looking at a housing strategy. Because I think that's one of our, to me, is one of our top priorities, is to try and get more, get the province to build more. That being said, as Deputy Warden Cunningham mentioned, our role is infrastructure. Our role could be providing a piece of land, but our role also is going to be, is transportation. And we know, first of all, that there's a huge transportation issue across, across the province to start with. And then, so with that, we have to start looking at our local transportation and expanding what, what exists, which is nothing at the moment.
Counselor Cushing?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to thank the CAO for the complex procedure that her and her staff have done to work on this, on the work on this housing situation. And just for information, I, this is just one example of what our staff does in the run of a day, is to looking, continuously looking for different procedures or different funding that we can get to better the municipality of Yarmouth. Secondly, it was mentioned about a small, right, a small number of people who took the survey. Is there a reason, is there a reason for that?
I didn't, I didn't work closely with the consultants. I did take advantage of the opportunity. I had to attend an engagement session, but it was for housing on a broader, on a broader lens and from a municipal perspective. I think the work was done on the tail end of, of the pandemic, and so that may have impacted things. I'm, I'm just not sure how broadly Turner and Drake reached out to the public to let them know about the opportunity.
Yeah. The reason why I'm asking that is because of our past surveys that we've done, we've been criticized quite openly about not letting the public know what's going on. And I think it's, you know, whether it's a company, outside company doing the survey or we're doing the survey and we're not, we have to figure out some way that we can actually get more information to the public. I don't know how, but to, to let them know that there's a survey coming and they should participate in it. Because numbers are a big item to whether people are for something or against something. So I think that's something we have to look at down the road. Thank you.
I personally really don't know where to go with this. At the very end of the conclusion, the current estimated unit shortage in the district of Yarmouth is 180. Demand, which includes shortage, is estimated to increase to 415 by 2027. The current construction trends, and this is something that I'm going to focus on, that about 30 units could be introduced to the market annually over the next five years. Construction trends. Now, when they talk about construction trends, are they talking about individual units or are they talking about multiple units? As far as I'm concerned, the municipality district of Yarmouth is more responsible in the housing, the housing crisis, is more responsible to make sure that we make it simpler for developers, developers to build housing and whatever that is. What we see a lot in the municipality, just from my own anecdotal observations, we see a lot of higher-end homes. We don't see a lot of bungalows built anymore. This is tough. I, I think that it's responsible for all three levels of government to make sure that we all work at this, this, this problem together. But it's also on the responsibility of the provincial and federal governments to make sure that something as simple as a reduction in HST or removal of HST on construction for someone who's actually producing this housing. We have the, the means to make sure that we create the conditions for the developers to develop a housing project or multiple housing projects, but it's also works the other way. The way that I see it, that this Turner and Drake is more focused towards an urban city, is, was pointed out, we don't own a whole heck of a lot of municipal infrastructure. Yes, we do own the plant out in Port Maitland, and we have put on extension sewage lines to Arcadia and also here in Hebron. And maybe we should be focusing as a municipality more on surplus properties that we may have, which we actually sold some that's developed, the housing here almost right across the street from the municipality's offices here. I, I don't really know where this is going and I, I feel like a little guy trying to eat an elephant, trying to take it at one bite at a time. And I don't know if, if we should be moving more in opening up possible lands. But also, you got to remember too, is when we open up surplus lands, that we have to follow the MGA on the way that that stuff's advertised and sold, yada, yada, yada. So this, this is a big problem, and I'm really not sure if the direction that may have been suggested is the right direction to take, but, oh, I really don't know where to go with this, to tell you the truth. Deputy Ward?
Well, I, I think, I think that, you know, we have some housing issues. Obviously, there's been a lot of inflation in housing pricing in, in Yarmouth. But in the report, the province grew by 5%. We grew by two or two. So that's both good news and bad news. It means that our housing probably isn't at the crisis level that it is in, it's a big issue, big problem, but it's not like it is in Halifax. HRM's a whole different kettle of fish than here. We've got our issues, but I think we need to solve our own issues. But I think you solve the problem by biting off bit by bit. You know, we, we've made some changes to our planning documents to, to allow for more construction easier. And the surplus land piece, I, I don't think that's, that's a big issue. We have very, very few surplus lots. I mean, I think putting together a plan is the CAO suggested, moving forward with, you know, looking at what infrastructure we might, and what inducements we might use with, with developers to actually get, you know, suitable land up and running for the private sector to develop on. I think that's the answer. So I think we've got a way forward and we'll flush that way, that way forward out as we, as we move ahead. So I'm, I'm happy with, not happy with where we are, but I'm, I'm happy that we're starting, we're going to develop a plan and then, and then, then we can, then we can put that plan into action. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Item, there was an added item on old business, item 8.3 asked by Counselor Sherry Hurlbert. I wrote down the topic is public engagement. Counselor Hurlbert, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for asking for clarity on that. So back in September, I had made the motion to have staff, the motion says, have staff be directed to explore companies who can provide training and insight on public engagement. And that was specific to surveys and projects and things that we're doing where we're asking for the public's input. We know, you know, to Counselor Cushing's, you know, comment earlier, we know that, you know, survey responses are low. And so I'm just wondering, do we have an update on where we are on that?
Well, you issued a request for proposals by invitation in December, and it closes on the 20th of January. So the responses will come in, there'll be a pre-vetting by staff, and then council will determine who they want to work with, if they want to work with any of those firms and go from there. So that's where we're at with that.
Perfect, thanks.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you. And maybe I'm kind of going a little outside the lines on this, but like, we just got a report from Turner and Drake. We had bylaws where we hired someone to come in. When we're, when we're going out to, we're going out looking for companies to do these surveys and things like that, is there a way that we could, we could stipulate in the contracts moving forward, like, that there has to be a certain amount of, you know, of public participation? Like, in order for these reports to be done, you know, I mean, I know they go out, they say they go out, they, they do two or three or three or four, and they say, well, public, public participation was low. Nothing we can do about it, more or less. But is there a way that we can kind of say, well, yes, there is? You know, you know, if you're going to come back to us, we expect a certain percent of our public to have been contacted and participated in these surveys. That way there, we know we are getting public feedback, as opposed to just accepting the low numbers and saying, well, you know, we don't like to see the low numbers, but here they are. I mean, we are contracting these, these companies to do the work. Why can't we make sure that they do the work? To a certain level. I shouldn't say that they're not doing the work, but, but to another level.
You're talking about participation rates.
Well, that, that has to do with, that has to do with reaching out, you know, communication with the public. I mean, some of the, some of, as far as I'm concerned, some of our troubles that we're experiencing as far as communicating with the public is the participation we're getting from the public on these reports and stuff. That's how I, that's, maybe I'm in the wrong spot, but that's how I took this to be part of. So I'm just saying, you know, as we reach out to a Turner and Drake, you know, their numbers aren't high. Well, they should be higher, and maybe they need to work to get us a little bit better numbers so that when we're looking at these reports, we have a more accurate, more accurate scale.
Madam CAO, could you take that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Warden. So through you to Counselor Allen, great points. And so, you know, as we analyzed the feedback we got from the public, we, you know, we took a look at what's been, you know, what, what we have done, not just internally in terms of when the municipality wants to communicate with the public, but also when, when consultants are being selected in the scope of work, one of, one of the things that has traditionally happened is the RFP has said, or the tender has said, there needs to be public engagement, and if there were certain parameters, it would be listed. But then it would be a way to evaluate the quality of the proposals coming back in to try to set apart those who were going to expend a lot of effort versus those who weren't going to put a lot of effort into it. It was a way, it was a way to differentiate them. And that can still happen. It really comes down to time and money. So one of the things that has not happened, generally speaking, is unaddressed mail to every mailbox in the municipality. So it's very expensive to send a leaflet, just a one-page flyer. But it can happen if council wants to spend the money to do that. That is, in addition to the other things we do that says, you know, we'd like you to know that we're doing this work, you might be contacted or you have an opportunity to engage in this way. So that's something that we have not done, that can be done. In addition to that, when we're talking about surveys in particular, and this is kind of a frustration for me, generally, the default approach to a survey is to design a survey, make it available, and people self-select. Where you end up with, in my view, self-selection that is based on a strong viewpoint on the issues that are on the table. And so although it will take more time and will cost more money, the municipality could say, if, if survey is a tool that's used in public engagement, it needs to be a random sample survey. That means that whoever's responsible has to contact a certain number of people in the municipality to achieve a certain percentage rate that guarantees a margin of error that's within, it's usually plus or minus 2% or 4%, something like that. So it's more time and money, but it can be done. And so, you know, if, if what we're hearing, and I think we are, is that even though there's a lot of good work being done to provide opportunities for people to engage, there is still a little bit more we can do. And so, you know, we should look at trying to do it and seeing if it changes the results. And could I just point out, Mr. Warden, too, just for clarity, the Turner and Drake work was not commissioned by the municipality. It was commissioned by the province and released to the municipality.
Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think, you know, I've been advocating the same way Sherry has for this work and, you know, our residents are advocating for more interaction with council. And I actually had a conversation with the CAO where I feel like she was going to recommend we set aside more money for mailouts. So I feel like that work's coming, and I'm looking forward to when you bring that work back. But I think we have to wait for that work to come back. And as the warden said, there's going to be a conversation. And as the Warden said, there's going to be a conversation on the 24th or 5th about the request from last month. So unfortunately, the wheels move a little slow, but we're moving forward. So looking forward to those two conversations, and I think that's probably all we can do today.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Item 9.1. Deputy Warden, could you please take the chair for this item? I need to use the restroom. This would be, yeah, Legislative Agenda, item nine, I'll get it to the proper page. And I'll take up your chair. And we're on 9.1, Legislative Agenda, darling and blonde, Deputy CO. So Darlene, I'll let you start off by giving you, giving us your report.
So each year we bring forward a proposed schedule. No? Okay. So each year, we bring forward a proposed schedule for the year for addressing policies and bylaws, specific ones, many of which come from direction from council. So what you have before you today is what we're bringing forward for discussion. And as you can see, they're organized by order of priority. So, yeah, we'll open that up for if there's any questions or discussion.
No.
Over here.
Counselor, nope, Counselor Daniel Allen.
Sorry, Nick. Yeah, no, I think priorities look good. I do have a question. I see on the policies it says council communication, and then, of course, waiting for feedback from council. So obviously, we're not communicating. What is the council communication policy that you're waiting for feedback from us?
So that's a piece that's been in draft form since just after the last election. And so council was trying to find ways to deal with the different types of communication. So protocols for electronic media, for social media, protocols for identifying the different types of written communication that might come in. And so one of the steps in the process was to receive council feedback on the draft documents. And it's just waiting to be triggered to come back on an agenda.
Okay. All right. So it's not something that we have, and you're actually waiting on us?
No, we really are waiting. We've sent out a draft by email a couple of times and asked for council feedback in order to put the comments all together and come back to council. So we can reissue that and get it to the top of the inbox if you'd like.
Please do. Thank you.
More questions or comments from council?
So a recommendation, Mr. Chair, would be in order to council?
Yes, a recommendation would be in order. Oh, Counselor Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a recommendation to, make a motion that we recommend to regular council, the approval of the legislative agenda as outlined today.
Okay, we've got a mover, a seconder? Counselor Durkey seconds. Any further discussion? Question being called for, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I'll turn the chair back over to our Warden, item 9.2.
Thank you.
All right, Legislative Agenda is done. Item 9.2, Mayor and Senator Board Chair and CEO Presentation Request. Counselor Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we discussed a while back, but I don't think we made it formal. So I'll make a motion that we recommend to regular council, that we invite the CO and the board chair for the Mariner Center to come in and do a presentation. I don't know if we should have specific questions that we want, like, there are things more specifically for me, sorry, I'll make that motion and then I'll discuss.
You'll still have the floor.
Yes.
Moved by Counselor Hurlberg, I seen Counselor Cushing second it. All right, you still have the floor, Counselor Hurlberg.
Most, for me, more specifically, Mariners on Main, how are the, what are the membership numbers like? How are we, you know, moving forward with things there? You know, we, I think we've been kept, you know, fairly well updated on the Mariner Center expansion, but, you know, just are there things, you know, to Counselor Hilton's point, you know, are there things that we can be doing to, you know, keep those things moving forward? Is everything okay? You know, one of the things is I look at the sign out front of the Mariner Center, and it's been broken, and I think, why has it been broken? So I'd like to ask them, why has it been broken? Or even if that's the way, you know, what's the avenue? I feel like there's just some things that we're lacking, or I'm lacking, in information from them, you know, and an update would be great.
Counselor Cushing.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. I attended a finance committee for the, for the Mariner Senator Board the other night, and one of the questions I asked was, oh, shoot, the number of members for the Mariners on Main, right, and to be broken down in each municipality, right? So I've asked that. And on that finance committee, we've also discussed about the sign that's not working. So, and it's a big number to fix it, so, you know, some of these requisites will come into the committee at a later date. So, thank you.
I think it's a great idea. I fully support the motion that's on the floor. I think we should have a presentation of some sort. Have we had one yet? Madam CEO?
Thank you. So the brand-new agreement binds the CEO and the board chair to do a presentation to the joint councils. So the CAOs actually talked about this in December, Jeff and Alain and myself, when we got together. So what I could interpret the motion to be is that the letter from Warden Cunningham, Warden Muse, and Mayor Mood gets drafted out to request this joint presentation. So it's item number 12 in the new intermunicipal agreement, and it reads, "The board and the CEO of the authority shall provide an annual presentation to a joint meeting of the councils for the municipalities, wherein the authority shall update the municipalities as to the progress that has been made in relation to meeting the objectives identified in the operational forecast and the capital investment plan." So I'll interpret the motion to mean, can you get that letter out the door?
But I don't know. My interpretation of the motion that Counselor Hurlberg put forward is more of a Modi-specific rather than having a joint one. I can't put words in Counselor Hurlberg's mouth, but...
Sorry, I should wait to be recognized.
I guess what I'm going to do is turn the floor over to CEO, then the next microphone first.
Right. So when the intermunicipal agreement was negotiated, the conversation around the need for all three councils to have these types of conversations with the CEO and the board chair, and maybe other members of the board at the Mariner Center, there was a recognition that it's a lot of work to prepare for, to do those kinds of things for three councils. So it was agreed that those things need to happen, but we would do them together collectively. And the benefit of that is all of the elected officials hear the conversation back and forth, and so you just get a, oops, sorry, you just kind of get a bigger picture, a broader spectrum of questions and conversations. So we have agreed that this is the way we're going to do that, with all due respect.
Counselor Hurlberg?
I'm fine with that. I think, I just feel like we need something. It's been a while, a long time since we've had anything, and, you know, my apologies for not remembering that that was in the intermunicipal agreement, subsection, you know, whatever. So I'm okay with it being a joint, and I think that there is, you know, value in hearing other, you know, municipal counselors, you know, or counselors from other municipalities, and, you know, what their questions are to them as well. So, you know, for us to have an individual presentation would be great, but I think that there is a lot of value in hearing what other people have to say, and, you know, kind of working through some of those things. So I can amend my motion, but I think that it's, as long as we have a presentation of some sort soon, or rather than later, is good.
You can certainly amend, you can withdraw?
No, I think I'm okay. I think, I think it was, I think it was as general, you know, it didn't say specifically to Modi, it just said we'd appreciate a presentation, so...
So what's your wish with the motion that's currently on the table?
To stand.
To stand?
Yeah.
Okay. Deputy Warden?
So, Mr. Warden, just, and I'll have to share the guilt, I'd kind of forgotten about that, too, although we, so, yeah, I think we all did. But perhaps, I'd suggest that we go around the table and just, you know, given the motion, just for greater clarity, as the COs indicated, that we're okay initially with the three councils meeting with the CEO and the board chair to get, to get the, to get the information.
I'll do that as soon as everyone has their chance to speak. Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, my understanding from what the CO said is that we don't really have a choice. That's the way it's going to be, and if this motion does that, that's fine. Being able to, I'm going to voice my complaints the same to you as I'm going to in front of them, and the best part is all three owners get to hear what we're going to say. So it's good, it's perfect. You know, it's almost budget time, that is one of our biggest bills. My phone is blowing up because people got the announcement from PVSC that, and they're worried about being able to stay in their own home right now. So my question to the board is going to be, you know, we pretty much gave them a blank slate to, blank check to open Mariners on Main, and what are we doing to make sure that we're mitigating expenses at that facility? So we know with the new building coming, that we were all supportive of, that expenses aren't going down, they're going up, and we need to make sure that we're doing our best to make sure that we're servicing our residents, but we're doing the best to keep them in a warm home right now. So, thank you.
All right, so is everyone clear on the motion on the floor, and are you okay with the way it stands? All right, so I'm going to call, question on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 9.3, Fire Hydrant System in Port Maitland. Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, a family lost their home over the holidays. It was quite a fire, and I have to say many, many thanks to the number of fire departments who responded. The mutual aid in this case was incredible. However, that being said, I did receive a message from a firefighter that I want to bring to your attention to see if there's something that we can do. What they found was that there was a lack of water, an access to water, and we know that in Port Maitland, there is a number of, a cluster of homes. So the concern is, they ran out of water and had to wait for a truck to come back. Given that there's an elementary school there, a fish plant, seniors housing, aside from all the houses along Highway One, is there any chance about looking into a fire hydrant, getting it installed centrally? Now, I know we don't have water lines there, so that becomes an issue to start with, and what are the alternatives? So what I'd like to do is, I guess, ask to see our staff, what can be done in the area, and if there's, if anything, to support the fire departments in Port Maitland.
I have a question, was this...
That's a motion.
Okay, so there's a motion.
To move to regular council.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Hurlberg. Thank you, Counselor Durkey. I'm going to ask, I'm going to talk first, because this is a subject that I actually know quite a bit about, and I'm not going to, I'm going to be tried to be blunt. Did this request come from the scene commander, or did it come from a firefighter in general? Do you know?
I know who made the request, I'm not sure what role. I know who made the request, but I don't know what...
His role was?
Typically, from the way that most fire departments work, to my knowledge, is if there's an issue, usually it would be the fire chief that reported that, and I'm just trying to be clear if it is the fire chief, because usually it's the incident commander. There may be different reasons why the, why the fire department ran out of water. Now, I don't know if it was, number one, not enough mutual aid, number two, if there was access close enough, number three, if the actual fire departments that were delivering the water, were they getting it from the closest source, or they were getting it from a pressurized hydrant? So I think there's, I like the motion that's on the floor for, to investigate, but I think it should start from a report from the incident commander if there was a, if there was a concern. Now, when you talk about a pressurized hydrant system, and I did see that email that you sent, Counselor Durkey, about 1,000 gallons per minute hydrant, that usually comes from a pressurized system. And when you talk about pressurized systems that are on the go all the time, you're talking big dollars. Now, I'm wondering if a closer dry hydrant, not to necessarily saltwater, but is there a freshwater area where a dry hydrant could be put in? There are fire departments all across our municipality and others that use what they call a dry hydrant, which is basically a unpressurized hydrant that goes into a pond. And then they use the truck itself, or a pump, that can be over 1,000 gallons per hour, to fill the trucks, to bring it to a portable tank. Now, living out in the municipality is a little bit different than when you don't have access to a pressurized hydrant like ones that we see all across, at least here, where there's a water line. So I'm a little leery to get staff to do investigation on that unless we have an actual request from the fire department as a whole, and that's my point. I don't know who's next. Counselor Durkey, your microphone's aye.
Yes, because I had not finished, but that's...
No, no, if you're not finished, you still have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, and I think that's, what I would like to do is to request that our staff just investigate with, with the fire department to see what transpired and what would be a better approach. And if there's something that we can do to assist with that, then we do that, if we can. Thanks.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I brought up dry fire hydrants a while ago, because we had a fire in Pictis Point, the dry hydrant was not accessible because of bushes and things like that. So I'm in agreement with the motion, per se, except for the fact that it's just specifically targeting Port Maitland. We have other communities, some have these dry hydrants. We should, I think we have an inventory of them, I'm sure, I think we've looked into that before. And to your point, like, we should be making sure these dry hydrants are all up to code or up to snuff or whatever, so that they work. I know, you know, every community has a condensed area, not every community has an elementary school such as Port Maitland, but I know every community has a condensed area. And I feel bad for the people that lost their home, and I agree that everywhere should have access to water, and not everybody can ever pressurize, because, but I do know that there are a number of dry hydrants out there. I know there's, and I know that some of them are just not kept up. I'm not sure whose responsibility it is, if it's the municipalities where they're in our area, or if it's the fire departments. I don't know, I'd like to know that myself. But I definitely think we should have an inventory of what is out there and what we need to cover areas such as Port Maitland. But we do have areas that do need coverage, that have dry hydrants, that we should make sure are functioning, and there is access to them. It should not, so for me, I'm in agreement with the motion, except for the fact I don't believe it should just be Port Maitland.
Counselor Cushing?
Your mic's not on.
Counselor Cushing?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A couple of questions I may have, that I have, I believe there was a dry hydrant into Allen's Lake. Am I right or wrong? Do you know that, Patty? You don't know, okay. But I think there is, but anyway, we had, as Counselor Durkey mentioned, there was a number of mutual aid of fire departments there to help out with this thing with this fire. But I'd like to hear a report from, as you said, the fire chief, who was involved in organizing all of this. And all these other fire departments come there, they had water trucks. So I just find, trying to figure out why it ran out of water, because they could get water out of one truck while the other truck is getting water. So I don't know what the problem, I'd just like to know more. So I don't know what the problem, I'd just like to know more about it. And, yeah, and as Counselor Allen was saying about the dry hydrants out there, they definitely should be looked at and make sure they're up to, working properly and are available when they needed. Thank you.
Deputy Warden?
Yeah, everybody makes good points. So I think, I think the motion, even though it is specific to Port Maitland, would, could serve as a starting point. So, I mean, if our CEO were to contact the fire department, get a debrief about what happened at Port Maitland and what, you know, their suggestions might be. And again, you know, we can, we can hear from them. And then some of the other questions that she can probably bring back some information to council about who's responsible. And, you know, maybe, maybe we do need to look at it a little bit more deeply across the municipality. But I think the Port Maitland situation might be a place to start. And then we could, could sort of fan out from there. And I think that would, that does it in my mind, if that makes some sense.
Before I open up the floor to Counselor Durkey, I do have one question, and this is to the recording secretary. Could you please read back the motion as you heard it?
Sure.
There you go.
Sure. It was moved by Counselor Durkey, seconded by Counselor Hurlberg to recommend to regular council that staff look into what can be done with the Port Maitland Fire Department to, sorry, in Port Maitland to support the fire department's access to water.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Durkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to note that there was nothing more the fire departments could have done to save this building. Even if they did have more water, like, it was gone within the first 15 minutes. So, so to no fault of the fire department whatsoever, just want to make note of that. And I'm in agreement, I think that with Counselor Allen, that following just this one situation that we act, we should be looking into ensuring all other areas have the dry hydrants updated. And again, I don't know who's responsible for that, but we want to ensure the safety of our residents. So, so once we pass this motion, maybe a second motion would be in order.
Or you can amend the one that's currently on the floor. You think it's two different things?
Yeah, let's, yes, I'd like, yes.
Deputy Warden?
I think we may be overcomplicating this a little bit. I think the CAO understands what it is, what we want her to do. I mean, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's a simple matter of staff reaching out to the fire department and getting some information about the incident and about the water supply and about some things that we might do and coming back to council. So, and I mean, and that, and that might also, at that juncture, you know, taking what information you've got at that point, the CAO has at that point, you know, depending on what she learns about who's responsible and all this type of thing. It is, she could ask a series of other questions and come back to council and report. So I'm not even sure if a motion's necessary because we're directing her to do something when really it's just been brought to her attention and it's just something that she'd probably do. I don't know procedurally. I think that's the right way to move forward, but...
Counselor Hilton? Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. There is good discussion on stuff like that, but the point that I make is every situation's different. And I hate to hear that a fire department runs out of water. But if there's anything the municipality can do to help fire departments, I'm all for it. Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think they are two separate motions. One is specific to Port Maitland. We did have a discussion around dry wells when I first started, came on council. So if, I'll make a motion that the staff bring back a briefing note on the response, whose responsibility it is to maintain dry wells and the number of them in the province, which I, or in the community, which I believe we already have the information. So we could review it.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I hear a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Allen. Discussion on that motion. I think it'd be quite simple, as a matter of fact. I think, if I'm not mistaken, mutual aid might have the, them facts right off the top of their head. And if I'm not mistaken, I can't think of his name right now. I can picture him. Would have that information or know that information. But I'm really not sure of the protocol on how fire departments take care of their own dry hydrants. I can only speak for what we do in Crowton. We train off of them quite consistently, making sure that our trucks do draw water. Whether, make sure, of course, this time of year, making sure that they're not frozen. I do know how we do it, but I don't know where all the others are and all that other stuff. So any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I did not hear any dissenters. Item 9.4, Grants. Counselor Sherry Hurlberg, you asked to have this added to the floor. I know it's more than just grants, but that's all I've written.
It's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if I hadn't asked to have this added, we could be done by now, and we are at our time. So do I need to make a motion to extend?
It's three hours.
Oh, we have three. Okay, never mind. So each month, Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities provides us with some information on funding and monthly. And they sent out their January update on Friday, and I read through it. And I know that our strategic plan says we need to be good stewards of our, of the residents' money. And, you know, I have, you know, made a motion that we look for, like, we discuss in our budgeting for the next fiscal year, you know, a grants coordinator, a part-time something, you know, that's up for discussion. But when I look at this list, and I did spend, you know, quite a bit of time on the weekend looking through it. And, you know, I, I feel like, can this be something that's added to our regular committee of the whole agenda so that we look at it? Or how, I guess for me, I don't know. Like, I look at infrastructure and accessibility grants, number four. And when I bring that up, you know, it talks about, you know, parks and recreation and accessibility. And I think, you know, is there an opportunity for the municipality to leverage some of that money? And how do we move forward if we do? And I know that most often, it's because we've made a recommendation and, you know, or we've passed a motion for something. But like, I see some of these things, there's, there's money out there, and I think that we could be using it. But I don't know how staff, how does the CAO envision we do this? If we don't have a grants coordinator, how do we, as council, receive updates to know that we are accessing the money that is available?
Madam CEO?
So, all great questions. So I guess the first thing I'd like to say is this is a brand-new asset at NSFM. So there's a person who's dedicated to combing databases and finding all these programs that are available to municipalities. So it's a brand-new asset. So we're not used to having access to this type of information in this way. And at the staff level, it's very helpful. So the NSFM individual who has this position is incredibly accessible, incredibly helpful, incredibly resourceful. And not just for the list, like the inventory, but for having a conversation around, here's what council would like to do. It doesn't look like it fits, but does it or could it? So we're just developing that relationship. We have those conversations with Lucy now. When I get this email, I send it out to the directors. So this is how we're leveraging the information right now. On council's strategic plan and your annually-approved business plan, each of the goals that you would like for the municipality to achieve has a staff person who's the champion. And so they're looking for these opportunities to help drive their, their projects forward. So I'm not sure how productive it would be to look at this monthly email and run through the list. I think what I can share with you that we've always done and will continue to do is, on a briefing note on a project that council would like to debate and analyze, we always list the funding opportunities that are available that we would plan to access in order to balance the budget on the project. When we come to council and we actually ask for approval to sign a contract or to enter into, you know, a new purchase of some sort, we always provide you with the list of the funds that is going to pay the bill. So capital fund, operating fund, gas tax fund, all those sorts of things. So it doesn't come in a nice, neat box every month. It comes over the course of the year through the bodies of work that we bring to you. I would suggest that this new position that council is having me explore is going to change a little bit about some of our, some of our colleague municipalities who get some of the big wins, it's because they have that grant coordinator. And they find a fund, and they just swing the bat hard. And so a project gets approved that might have been two or three years out, and they're doing it now. And I do think that's the catalyst we're looking for.
Okay. No, and that's helpful to know how, because we know that this is new. And I wasn't, I wasn't certain that, you know, monthly was going to be the way we do it. But when I look at this, so if I look at this and I'm, you know, Saturday afternoon, I'm like reading through these, can I email, do I, can I email you to say, is this, I just, I just don't know how to navigate that. You know, like, when I look about this, you know, accessibility one where it says ramps, power door, you know, operators, accessible doors. I think, you know, is there something there that we can leverage? But if you're telling me, you know, if you're telling us that, you know, staff are looking at these lists and, you know, if there's things that they can leverage. But if there, I guess I'm thinking, if there's something that we haven't asked staff to look at and you see this great opportunity, it doesn't mean that you couldn't come to us and say, here's this funding opportunity and here's how it might fit in. You haven't asked us for it yet, but we know it's on your long-term plan, right?
Right. And the application that just went in last month on low-carbon communities is a perfect example of that.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. Next items are in camera. And I gotta, typically I ask for recess before we go into in camera. But we have a presenter in camera in regards to contract negotiations, so we need to go there right away. I don't mean to be ignorant to anyone. The gallery wants to speak to me afterwards, but we do have someone waiting. I told them that we thought we'd be in there between 4:00 and 4:15, and here it is, 4:30. So I need a motion to go into camera. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Hilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.